Okay, so I would do the prayer and ask Mr. I would do the pledge. You as, as we know, this is great, council wellness one. This terrible disease affected a lot of families, a lot of deaths. Let's keep those people, those women in mind also. This man, Coach Cheese, he lost his wife. You know, so much chaos in the world, so much trouble. So let's take a moment to start with just for, for everything that's going on in this world. Because we know someone higher than us can handle all these problems. I would thank you. O gracious Father, you come in the presence of thank you. Thanking you for everything you have done for us, realizing we couldn't have accomplished anything. We want to thank you for this opportunity to serve the people of this parish, Father, and looking at how much. Crowned out here with wisdom, knowledge, understanding, and business value in this parish. I pray for every junior here and their families as well. I pray for everyone, some of the foreigns. You know, you know, Father, you may know all about them. I pray for this country, I pray for this state, I pray for this parish. I pray for elected officials, Father, and I pray for the less fortunate. I pray for the elderly, Father, this is looking at my. I pray for constant unity, Father. I pray for unity, realizing their spirit and unity, Father. Running us together as one. And Father, everything that's been done here will be mine. Give you all the honor of praise and glory in Jesus' name, God, I pray. To the flag, we now say it for America. To the Republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no end. Thank you, sir. Mr. Xavier, please call and roll.
Mr. Dexter Armstead.
Present.
Mrs. Kristen Chastain. Mr. Michael Cheatham is absent. Mr. Kyle Flanagan.
Here.
Mr. Jason McCray.
Present.
Mr. Keith Mills is absent. Mr. Richard Olivo. Dr. Chrissy Oakland.
Here.
President Lewis Kent.
Present. To the motion chair, approve the agenda by one addition. The addition to a discussed add in Kingview Circle and Balmoral Drive to Overly Project. Mr. Larry Hofstedt. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, motion carried. To foot old business adopted minutes from October sixth, twenty twenty five regular meeting. Have everybody read them? What's about Mr. Oliver?
Second.
About Mr. McCray. Any discussion? Question from the audience. Is that all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, motion carried. See, new business. Adopt a resolution calling a special election to be held in the parish of East Louisiana, State of Louisiana, to authorize the extension and rededication of a special tax therein, making applications to the State Bond Commission and providing for other matters in connection there within it. The regional library. Mr. Collins, are you here? Yeah, please do. Say your name, please.
Frederick Collins, local regional library. When we discussed this, uh, previous meeting, uh, a few months ago, when we, when we had the initial announcement of the resolution, this would just be a call to election, uh, for a renewal of our mileage. It again is not asking for any additional funds, we would never do that. Uh, we just want to be, uh, as, as good stewards of the funds that we have. The only difference is this would be a rededication. So in addition to the extension, which is just a typical renewal of the mileage, the rededication would allow us, it would, we would put the word construct in, in the wording, which would allow us to potentially build if we ever got the footing to do so in a place like Slaughter, for example.
But you.
So that, that's, that's what this is, we just ask you to consider.
Let's emphasize, it's not a new text, please.
It is not.
Please pound on that issue, please. It is not a new text.
No, we would.
It's a rededication.
It is exactly the same amount, uh, that it's all.
Okay. Motion?
Motion.
By Mr. Flanagan.
Second.
Saying by Mr. McCray. Any discussion? Question from the audience. Is that all in favor?
Can I ask a question?
Please.
On the bonds commission? Are you, are you intending to go to the bond commission or is that just provision?
Well, we, for all the, the elections, uh, for renewals of the millages or any sort of like, um, voting or capital matters, we, we have to go through the bond commission to get notified if they would want to be holding it in the project.
Any more questions? Is that all in favor? Yes, ma'am. Say your name, please.
Andy Kemp, uh, in light of the past election we just had, if this thing would not pass, what would happen?
We would have to, we would try to go back, uh, usually, I believe you have to wait six months.
Six months, you have to wait six months.
Yeah.
There gonna be an election coming up in six months, yeah.
Uh, um, April?
In April.
I think it's April.
It's April, six months down the road, so we have six months.
This will be April eighteenth, I believe.
Yeah, I believe it is April eighteenth. Any more questions? Is that all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Ms. Collins. Number two, introduction of proposed revision to Code of Ordinance, section twelve, one oh two B. Scott Yarborough. State your name, please.
Scott Yarborough, local county manager of the state of Louisiana. Um, I'm here in my own capacity tonight, I typically come here representing Ecoplex as a group of five, uh, on solar farm outing, uh, college district of Georgia. And, but tonight I'm here in my own capacity to, Sam and I met on the current language that we have in the county of Louisiana Parish. And at the time when, when you guys adopted it, um, I was pretty new to what I was doing and knew that we were gonna work on a project agreement with you guys and lay out the parameters of this project. And as I've gone around and worked in different areas and seen different things, I, I think there's a little more protection that's needed for the parish, uh, in this particular language. And so Sam and I met and talked about it and kind of figured out the important, uh, guidelines, you know, things you should consider around decommissioning setbacks, um, permitting, permits, the national permits, like weapons permits, state structural, all these types of things. So that, you need developers to come in, just as Ecoplex has done. Would need to negotiate a project agreement specific to that track the land with the police jury. And therefore you'd be able to define the setbacks that you want, the buffering that you want, the commissioning side of the equation to make sure that in the event, uh, where it's coming off of some border, where is that a useful light? That there's a plan in place for them to come in, take it off, bring it back to its natural state. So that's all I'm suggesting here is that, uh, you strengthen the ordinance language to make sure that in the event that you have another developer come in, that the language isn't open ended and not related, build a project without the evidence.
You know, I talked about that, put some teeth into the ordinance, yeah.
Give you, give your, give the jury the ability to represent their, their districts and, and really determine which order to look like. How you like it, because if you need commission in the future. That's really all I've, I've done. And again, this is in my own, the vast scale, not, I'm not to represent the public.
And we're trying to capture Sam, he have reviewed them. Right next to you.
Yes, we do review it and what it's gonna do is it's gonna refine it. Refine it is gonna just clarify it better.
Right.
Language, uh, stop was recommended, it's acceptable.
Yeah, I agree, we talked about.
Adopt it and we're gonna have to advertise it and change the ordinance.
Right.
Would this retroactively affect the project that you would represent?
Because we, we actually have all of these things covered in the project agreement that we have. So I really kind of looked at that because it was pretty comprehensive as to what we covered. So now you would, you would retroactively affect anything we already covered, you know, affect five years, it's gonna cover these things.
Since we, we amend it, I want us to, we'll have to, uh, advertise it now.
Just let me know when you, how do you.
Have, have a purpose hearing on it. Okay. Motion to effect? Second.
Well, it's in black.
Yeah, but we're going to take action on that because it's going to get that pretty quick, I think. Because a lot of problem with solar farms all over the state, I'm keeping up with that. A lot of people fighting solar farms anyway, so.
And I didn't know the, when, when I met with Sam, I wasn't sure whether, whether the process would be, I thought introduction was the first process.
Yeah, you have to introduce it, yeah.
Because I don't know how it has to go back. I just wanted to start, get it started and get it from the other.
Okay, good enough. So we'll take action, that's our next meeting, okay? You're actually taking the night, thank you.
So it'll be at the next.
Yeah, sit on the dinner for the next meeting, yeah.
I'll see you, I'll be.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. Okay. Authorized resolution for council or agents to provide transportation with East Louisiana Parish for contract year twenty six, twenty seven. That's something we do every year.
Motion.
By Mr. McCray.
Second.
Second by Mr. Armstead. Any discussion? Question from the audience. Is that all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, motion carried. Discuss take action on intergovernmental agreement between the city of Baton Rouge, Paris of East Baton Rouge, East Louisiana Parish for agreeing that lemonade be rolled, yours. Mrs. Chastain.
They have come up with this intergovernmental agreement. Um, last time we discussed it, we were doing, they, we were gonna do it for no charge and I said, no, we can't do that. So last we came up with, um, the rate twenty four hundred feet and it would be done the same day we could grade it before you outside of the, um, of the rate.
So we, we did an endeavor with them?
Yeah, I got you.
I think if you put that first in everyone.
This here is forwarded to me, this is.
It's a cooperative.
It's a minimum of two hours, which probably doesn't take two hours to grade twenty four hundred feet. They provide the raffle, we would just grade it.
Grade it.
And no more than twice the length of they come out, um, which I don't think we grade twice as much.
No.
No.
We on rotation.
Motion to effect? Sam approved it, looked over and dealt with it. It is good.
So move.
By Mr. McCray.
Second.
Any more discussion? Question from the audience. Is that all?
How just weird, have, have we ever done this before? Is this something we've ever had?
I can't, I, I can't recall what we're doing though. Not with another parish, we always done it with our towns.
Yeah.
Within the parish. Any more discussion? Is that all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, motion carried. Let's go on agenda, adopt a twenty twenty six all system bridge replacement resolution, Director Derek Hill.
Derek Hill, uh, during the D W. This is, is the annual certification that's mandatory with DOT plus standing compliance with the annual, um, then Mr. Lisa Witt and DOT here, of course, out for leaving Smith. And this one is for next year, so it's mandatory that you get it to three days, stay compliant with our office.
Okay.
Motion.
So move.
And Mr. McCray, thinking about Dr. Quinn. Any discussion? Question from the audience. Is that all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, motion carried. Say again, see, Dr. Must coming up. Approve entities state agreement with DOTD for state project number H O one five five thirty three, H O one five five thirty four, H O one five five thirty five, H O one five five thirty six.
Uh, this agreement is for the other state projects, uh, for the other four parish bridges that were approved by DOTD to replace, uh, it's one hundred percent, no cost to the jury. Uh, we just need to get an agreement with him, so he can move forward with the problem.
So move.
You got it, Mr. McCray, saying about Dr. Quinn. Any discussion? Question from the audience. Is that all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Hill.
No, a question, uh, right, while we got you up here. Um, there's a bridge out up there by Mr. Kent.
Oh, yes, on State Highway.
Yeah, Elway.
Elway.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
What's the status on it?
We just, we no DOTD.
Because this, all the work has been completed on it, hasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, because I came up through that way to go to the funeral, that turn around and go all the way back around to Clint.
What, that's a State Highway. Highway four twenty two, that's a State Highway.
State Highway.
That's a state bridge.
They're gonna be closed until December, yeah, they're gonna do. That's a state project.
Okay. I didn't know, I didn't, I didn't know it was closing, I went, because I would've went around the other way.
Yeah, that's a state.
Didn't have a deadline on it?
December, I believe. They're gonna be closed for a while. That's right above my house. It don't affect me, but it affects people coming from Norway and going to Norway. Anything else, Mr. McCray?
That's all I have, Mr. Hill, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. Approve advertisement to fill upcoming vacancy on Waterworks District number seven, Parish Secretary Trey.
Okay, so it's time. To Mr. Tony Roushans, um, term is about to expire. So we just want to get ahead of it and see if you all would approve advertisement to fill the vacancy.
Some move.
Second.
Saying by Mr. Armstead. Any discussion? Question from the audience. Is that all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, motion carried. Let's go on agenda, discuss take action on renew, rebid of current, current residential garbage collecting contract, Parish Secretary Trey.
So I just asked if you all would, um, if you're ready to take a vote on whether you would like to renew or rebid this, um, project. Toward the beginning of the year is when the, the project.
Contract expires.
Yes, sir. So we want to just kind of, with so much going on at the end of the year and the beginning of the year, just want to make sure that we have everything straight with our annual calendar.
Yeah, called current contract with Waste Pro is about to expire. Five years and came and went.
Okay, can I ask, how is things? I mean, I don't have any, I just, I, I know better.
I had a problem today, yesterday.
I got a problem right here tonight.
I haven't had any problems.
Yeah.
They had, they had started straightening up a little, but I'm still getting, I'm still getting calls out of Wilson.
What are you thinking, is it, is it straight, say, can't find or?
It's the same ones, like it's the same people, I think if you have to go back there three times in the last month, you know you have to pick up their garbage.
And this man's garbage, I'm talking about, it hasn't been picked up in three weeks.
Because the only problem I ever really had was as far as you can go in these Louisiana Parish, and you got to go in these Baton Rouge Parish and come back over there, that's the only real problem I've ever had.
No, I haven't.
When they changed drivers, they would know it's there.
No, it's in the.
I had problems on nine fifty two Dawson Road, Caruth Road, and down in Sawme Hill and Wilson on Grant Street, all the time. Now they, they got it straight out on Caruth Road.
They have a new supervisor, once you call him, he would adjust the issue right then if he can. He do, he don't, he don't waste no time adjusting the problem.
I would like to make this statement early and it's just like, make the change, I don't mind making changes. But the thing about, if we make the change, a lot of the people that work for them will go to work with the same people. Is it gonna be better, is it gonna be same, you know, some of the same, that's, I, I just can't see how it'll, no matter who you put.
I don't think that, I don't think that's necessarily true. Because they, we, I offered the option to them to come and try to employ some people from this parish. To help them with going to different neighborhoods, house somebody locally. They got, um, people that work for trash companies here locally and they never did that. They, you know, they praised the idea, but they never did anything, you know? I've been over backwards for Waste Pro. I've stood up for them over and over and over. But I'm gonna tell you now, the parish is gonna be disappointed if we don't bid this out and try to get somebody else, or, or at least entertain it.
I know the people in my district will be very upset with me about all entertainment.
You know, that's what this, this system's all about.
Right.
I just, I haven't had any major problem that I can fix and, so.
I mean, I can fix some with a phone call, but I shouldn't have to, you know what I'm saying? Like it's, sounds terrible, maybe their job to do.
So let's take action on renewal or rebid, so.
Can, can I ask a question of Mr. Sam on this? Um, we're talking possibly rebidding this. Uh, if we were to do so, when we bid it, can we do some alternatives? In other words, the method in which the waste is collected. So you have currently individuals on the back of the truck that physically grab cans and dump it into the rear of the truck. At the same time, can we also bid something along the lines of the automated arm to dispose of the debris over the top of the truck? As well as something maybe outside the box where we have a central deposit site of dumpsters and people would bring it there, whether it's the local fire stations or something like that? I mean, just get some different options to see what's cost effective for the parish.
But I've seen people in Zachary and other places that's got that automated arm that comes out just like everything else with this high technology on it, they stay broke. They, you know, they always broke and it takes a while for them to get them repaired, so, and parts. So, I mean, I know what you're saying, though, it is high deal.
But we include anything in the bid process.
Yeah.
It may be good, you can just open your bid process, uh, to get a lot of different companies to make here, you can make different ways. You know, and get insight or, or gain some knowledge about how many people do it too. This is a traditional way to do it, it's a whole way to do it, they, maybe you want to tell your landlord about that. So you might be able to, or you can do it where you can gain a lot more information and have a better choice.
Yeah, and I've, and I've said before, uh, too, in my experience in the past, in North Louisiana, they do those localized collection sites. So it's a intersection on one corner, multiple dumpsters, it's more rural parishes. But nonetheless, might be an option, I don't know. I mean, Ms. Oakland brings up the idea of people that are in firm, won't have the ability to deposit it there. I can understand and appreciate that. I just didn't know if other options would be available and how we would do that.
The media's going, whatever options you want to explore.
Exactly.
Have to get the individuals to come in and give you some insight on that, or give you some kids on that.
Okay, wonderful.
Yes, sir.
If you're going.
Come to the mic, please.
If you're, if you're going to rebid this, could you put in a request for a, um, recycling program?
Yes, sir, we can.
Because I see so many boxes, so much cardboard going to the landfill and it's just ridiculous. Right, half the truck is cardboard boxes.
Yes, sir. Okay, since we're talking about residential garbage, I know, come to the mic, please. I'm sorry. Say your name, please.
Here in Cheyenne, Iowa.
Okay.
Uh, we picked up my trash on Friday. Uh, week four last, it was not picked up. This past Friday, it was not picked up. The people of Foster Road, for me, theirs was not picked up. They came back, picked theirs up. I got on the phone and called to find out why mine was not picked up. They came back, uh, 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 we called them the police jury office.
Yeah, Ms. Ms. Rachel, I see you called, yeah, she called them, babe.
And, and they came back, that gentleman got off of that truck, walked and looked in that can and ran the can and got back in the truck and drove off and the trash has yet not been done.
I asked Ms. 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 Kelly about that, she said she took a picture of her, Ms. Kelly?
And I tell you, we talk of this.
We're working on it now, please, okay, we are. We're going to address your concern. She talked to him, did she, Ms. Kelly? Ms. Kelly?
Yes, I talked to him and she sent a picture of his, um, trash being picked up and his trash being empty.
Did you get, did you get a response on mine today?
No, I have not.
Excuse me, sir, what, uh, what road you live on?
Oh, nine sixty one.
Nine sixty one.
Nine sixty one?
Uh, the family foster room for me is complete. Mr. Ronnie Kong has had trouble with heads. And we have stray dogs out there, they drop them off, they come and they turn the can over and I have to pick it up. I mean, it's, it's just, I mean, I mean.
We got, we got your concern, the C addresses, so we talked about it, so we're gonna work on it, Mr. Firebrand. Okay? Thank, thank you, sir. Any more discussion?
Danny Kemp. Um, firstly, I haven't had any problems with Waste Pro other than the time they changed my pickup date and never told me. But that's pretty fine. But my concern is, I think there are a lot of people in the parish who do not understand what they consider picked up. They don't like new stuff in a can, they want it in a bag.
Yeah.
You know, that kind of thing. Is there a number of cans you can have out there? There's, there's a bunch of building materials just up the road from me that, that someone's put out and been picked up. They're not gonna pick it up.
No, no, sir, that's, that's someone else.
And I don't know, maybe something, an article in the newspaper outlining, this is how we want the garbage to be done, that, that maybe if the, the populace understood more about what was acceptable and what was unacceptable.
We sent.
I don't think it's about that, what's acceptable. I, I don't know what's going on.
Wait, wait, let, let her finish, please, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't know what's going on with y'all, but I, I, I do know that there's, they have certain dictates that they follow and if you don't follow whatever their dictates are, they're gonna just bash you out.
Because we passed a fly out when we got this new company, they had their do's and don'ts and what to put out there, so. They begin to perfect know. There's certain things that they pick up, there's certain things they pick up. You're right, Ms. Ms. Kim. Any more questions? It's a question from the audience. Okay, we got a motion to renew or rebid the current residential garbage collection. All in favor?
Aye.
So we're gonna do it? Rebid or we gonna rebid?
Both of them, renew or rebid, whatever come up.
It's gonna be renew or rebid.
Yeah, it's gonna be renew or rebid, either way it goes. Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Just saying, yeah.
Because this is the end of their contract.
Yeah, their contract, five years is up.
I see what you're saying, that makes sense.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, is, he's saying that either gonna, he gonna have to.
Renew.
I think it's gotta be either or.
Or, it could be either or, it can't be both. We either renew it or we bid, we come up for that time, but now's not time for it to come up, okay?
So we making, we been ready to make a motion on one of the other.
One, yeah. We include both of them, renew or we bid, we have a choice when we get bids coming in. We give you new one we have or take a new bid. It's either or.
They, they saying.
Oh, I see what that, I see what.
I think you have to separate it and you have to say, we're gonna make a motion to renew and then, no, not an or, and then another motion to rebid. Because you can't renew and rebid. Kind of sounds like our town's opposition.
And we probably need to say effective what day.
Yeah.
Yeah. With the contract in next year.
So when do they contract, yeah, I guess that's what we may need to know.
I believe it's in March. I, I don't remember the exact day, but I, if I remember the discussion in the contract, it was March.
Well, let's get all the dates together and bring it back to the next meeting.
Bring table to the next meeting.
So I guess, like I say, I guess the thing would be when they contract in and then we need to make a motion to rebid and they can go back in the process if they want to, but we do have to rebid it and not re.
If, if we renew them, they still have to rebid.
Yeah, have to rebid it, either way it go.
Miss Yamiche, what you, do you think?
Um, if you, away from renewing, you can say when that time comes, if you don't want to renew, you're gonna be for a while without it.
A garbage collector.
We can do that.
It doesn't, it's not like the previous, uh, Am Waste contract where it automatically renews if you don't contest it.
It probably don't.
I thought it did. So if you don't.
Go ahead and do it now. I mean, I'd be sure you wanna, I'd be sure you wanna rebid it, I just wanted to, I know there's been some talk about it.
Rebid it.
But if you, we can.
So which one you wanna do? You wanna do both of them tonight, or just do the renewed?
If you don't, no, you don't have to renew it yet. Um, but if you think you want to rebid it, we can put it on next again.
Mr. DA.
You know, y'all just kind of need to make a choice what you want to do.
You rebid it.
If you rebid it, they have an option.
You rebid it, right, they have an option to rebid on.
If you're not happy with them, you know, it might not be a good idea to renew it.
No.
So if you just say you want to rebid it or you have to give them a certain time period, they're just, if you're gonna, um, not redo their contract or rebid their contract, they can come in and rebid it with y'all.
It does.
And offer to make some changes to it. The contract needs to be changed.
Right.
Needs to be reworked, it was not written up, I don't know where it came from, I saw it after the fact, I never saw it before. It didn't have, it doesn't have a lot of things in there that.
It doesn't.
And that way you'll give us some time, so that Mr. Dequilla can look at it, you all can decide what you want. And we really have time to advertise it, if you don't have the time, then we need to advertise.
So are we gonna vote tonight on?
Rebid it. Rebid it.
Yes.
Okay, I make a motion.
What's, okay, second. One second, that's second. Do we bid? She has more.
I'd like to know when it's, when it's actually due.
More, more.
It's in March.
It's in March.
That not wants to be without anything and not.
We can't wait till the last day because.
We can start opening up.
And I think it needs to run, uh, a little.
Yeah, I'll, I'll look at it, you know, but right now, you know, I don't hear.
At the end of the year.
Plenty enough time to give everybody notice, because you have a lot of other companies that may be interested.
They rebid, they rebid for it.
And if, if you put it out a month before, you know, they may not get it.
Have time.
Right now, you're putting it out early enough, so you can have a lot of people that may draw a lot more attention as well.
That's true. Thank you.
I would, I would kinda recommend just, you know, make a motion and say rebid it, you know, and, you know, set a date. You could have to set a date, maybe, uh, happen first of the year or something like that. And that would pound them, that you have to give them, that you noticed how them, that you have to give them.
So I, I guess, yeah, that makes sense, cause I say, when we rebid it, then right when they, um, in the waste pool, is, that's what I'm saying, like, Ms. Dequilla, when there's time expires, we already have something in place. Like, hey, we already have our numbers. When it expires, either we gonna rebid it, or we gonna go with company B or C. That makes sense.
Mr. Cassine made the motion.
Yes, Ms. Cassine. I second it.
And, and do we have a right to rebid also?
That's for sure. That's for sure.
Yes, sir.
I'm not clear about the difference between renewing or rebiding. Can you renew the existing contract? Is that, doesn't that contract end at five years?
Yeah, five years.
So it has to be rebid at five years?
We had the option to renew it. We had the option to contract.
You can, you can renew it if you choose to and just let the same company. Well, that's another question.
Does he have the same cost, but yet we?
Won't be the same cost, of course. It's gonna be, yeah, that's unknown. That's unknown.
Right.
Company everything or whatever now, so that's unknown. So we go direct to renew report and just deal with the rebid part. One second.
Kirsten made this motion and.
So all in favor, ought to rebid our contract.
Right, that's for sure.
For garbage collection. All in favor?
Uh.
In a poll, motion carried. Okay, let's move on. Discuss, take action on RFO for engineering service. Add the mitigation, parish secretary. We had a problem. We have two people bid, right?
Yes, sir. We only received two bids, so it's the recommendation of your grant administrators to advertise again. And that's for engineering.
We need at least three.
Need a motion on that?
Yeah.
I make a motion.
Second.
Any more discussion? Question from the audience. Not all in favor?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Are you just looking at consulting engineering? Are you just interested in hiring a consulting firm, who considers actually hireable person as an engineer? You've got enough stuff in this parish. You need a full-time engineer.
Well, we have one. We have one with, similar to what I'm saying. Both.
Uh, engineer or, um, services. I mean, like a company or engineer.
Yeah. We're up in the parish.
Cause how, how much money are you budgeting for engineering services? Cause that's gonna determine whether you wanna hire an, an engineer or if you wanna hire a consultant.
We have some hundred thousand now for forty and a lot, right? Yeah, we, it was a hundred thousand then, so maybe even higher.
I don't know what the numbers off the top of my head. You have to go back.
It was a hundred thousand.
That's what I remember too, Mr. Lewis. And, and in the past, I know, I can't remember where we're at currently, but in the past, they didn't meet that. They didn't get to that number.
And then you have issues when you're dealing with an engineer firm, that the cost, when you're picking your firm, the cost can't be a reason to pick them or not pick them. So these RFQs, I don't even think they can even include the cost of the firm. You have to negotiate on the firm after that. After you pick them for their abilities. That's the law. Not our law.
Yeah, right.
That's the law.
Yes. Based on qualifications as opposed to based on, on the question of pricing or request of qualifications, like state and qualifications.
Same difference. Okay, motion to the figure. We have the two bids at present.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
In a poll, motion carried. Okay, recommendation award bids for generator project. Darren is not here, Darren will.
We gonna skip, we gonna table it?
We'll table it.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Foster, could you, um, give us the, the, the recommendation for the, um, generator project?
Are you gonna table it today?
He said.
We got, we got, we have three things out here for Mr. Bueller. Let's just table him till he, till he can be here. We could table.
We need to go ahead and, um.
But we don't know what, 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 unless Ross got the information.
Because he's a part of the, um, board.
You know.
He's, Mr. Bueller's out of town. He won't be back until.
I second the motion.
Yeah, we take it.
All three out of ten, eleven, and twelve.
Okay.
Okay.
I think we're on a, a time crunch. Can we, um.
How can we approve some? How can we approve some?
And I was about to say, can we move it down? And I give this recommendation.
We can move it down.
Move it down to.
Um, because, you know, we've been dealing with the generator project for a long time now, and, um, there's some deadlines.
So when we say move it down, move it down to.
What you think, try to contact? Okay.
After executive session. Sam, is that legal?
Would you move it out?
To move.
To get, to get his voice on the telephone to give us his recommendation? Well, this gonna be.
It's just like, it's just like doing it virtual.
Yeah, but you can't do it virtual anymore.
Yeah.
Now, I just better wait until next time.
Well, so it's table, it's a little extra right now. I know, I know one of the time limit, but I don't know.
Two weeks make, make a difference.
He should have let a representative, yeah. He never gonna be out of town. He should have let us know.
I send a representative.
Sean going with him, so. It's Sean with him, so they, they're both out of town.
Where's he at? Out of town somewhere?
Lafayette, Little Charles somewhere.
Changes.
And we can't. Yeah, that's, and take action or establish serious for the debris room. Well, we can't speak for him. He has to speak for himself. I mean, a motion table ten, eleven, and twelve. He's with him. They going, they both out of town.
Probably shouldn't have it. That's what we should be doing. They both have, they need to be at the train and prom.
Okay, we're table, most of ten, table eleven and twelve.
I second it first.
More discussion.
What is our point?
We table it. So all in favor?
Uh.
In a poll?
Yes.
And I will say the number of left wing.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So you don't have anyone for debris removal. If you, if you don't, um, he needs to do another RFP. Because he hadn't done anything that he, he had to re-advertise for debris removal.
Yeah.
And, um, he was working on an extension, but I don't have. I just wanted to let you all know that he don't have.
So we don't know. He, he put, he put it to rock and hard place. We don't know.
Is, are you here to speak on this, or are you just make comment or what?
Oh, I, I'll take, I'm, I'm following. I'm Zach, we're following there. Uh, we, we had, uh, put in a statement qualifications for the ad mitigation, uh, aspect. Uh, they need to go and try to elaborate on that. I need to talk about it if you'd like, but the, the current thing that we're going right now, I think we'll pass the application.
It's, you have two bids.
I understand.
We have two bids.
There's ways to, if you wanted to document that, but I'm not sure what your federal funding is. You could go send it out back to rebid as a version of saying, look, we tried multiple times. We didn't get answers. That documented through, uh, you could, I'm not sure what the background is between the past parish engineer, uh, SOQ versus this ad mitigation engineer, or if they were supposed to be the same. I'm not sure if they were completely different, but, uh, if they were the same, that is two times that you've advertised for something of that nature to kind of document, uh, just putting that up there. I'm not, but I don't know the backstory behind that. I just, I commented earlier because you had asked about the pricing versus qualifications, and when you're dealing with federal dollars, you have to be able to support, uh, that you're picking a qualified firm, because if you're using federal dollars, uh, and those federal dollars will be used to, uh, through reimbursement program to pay the consultant or engineer.
Okay, I'll just, please.
That's in the new FEMA.
Yeah, from guidelines.
Yeah, yeah. Whereas we're an RFP requesting pricing, like one of these other industries you have right here, you're asking which, how much is the cost? And I wanna pay based off the cost, uh, federal dollars, you cannot, you can't do that.
So we can't make aggressive decisions, we don't hit, don't hit.
Well, they take, what they make.
Mr. Cassine, table this, uh, second to table.
All in favor?
Uh.
In a poll, motion carried. Yep. Let's move on. We'll come back to thirteen. That'd be the last thing on the agenda. Let's go to committee and staff report. Live committee, I don't have anything. President committee.
I don't have anything, thank you.
We discussed Ed Changview Circle and Balmoral to overlay project list. We got a priority list. He just wanna add them to the list. We got a road priority list. Add Balmoral Drive. Overlay project, yeah. We definitely do overlay project at the present.
He has several things.
Okay, he only, he can come up now.
I went wrong. Took some pictures of the road, and also probably the most pressing issue is we've got erosion. At, at one point, uh, a culvert, and it's undermining the road. There's erosion under the road surface, and that has to be dealt with quickly, or we're gonna have a collapse of the road. And this is in a segment where we've got buses running through there in the morning and the dark.
That's in Balmoral?
Yeah, on, on the circle, on the outside. Uh, it's where the, the three big culverts go under the road, and the road surface is pretty rough, but there's serious, um, erosion going on at the culvert, and, and getting worse. I brought this up one other time.
You brought it before, I recall.
And there was some patching done on the road surface, but nothing was done about the erosion underneath, and that's gotta be dealt with, or we're gonna have, end up with a collapse there. And when I'm going around looking, each one of the major culverts that goes under the road has erosion on either side of the road. And that's, um, coming out of the pod, coming out of the lake, and going into the lake. All three of those culvert areas are in serious need of repair, because it's, it's just eroding away and just collapsing. And we've got utilities going through on some of these. I can see a wire exposed in two different spots. So those at least have to be dealt with pretty quickly, but we also wanted to get our road, um, the priority list for resurfacing. It's probably been twenty years since the, the road was put in, and that's about the lifetime for an asphalt road. So I wanna make sure that we get our road on the project list, so that, you know, when you're setting priorities, that we're at least being considered. Part of our issue is also the crowding on the road is not proper, so we're getting gips in it, and where the water sits is just disinterred.
It's a process that we use. Usually, when we have overlay project, we let a juror pick the roads that they wanna prioritize. Each juror in the own district, so talk with the juror on that, but we have no problem adding to the.
And then we had a study done to determine the worst roads in the parish. So that's, we got a list for that also.
Was that one of the roads?
I don't think so. Wasn't, no.
It wasn't.
Now, I, I took pictures, and I'd like to provide them to you. If you can give me either an email address or, um, messaging, we're not gonna test the proposals, please, and it's just.
Yeah, forward to our parish manager.
Yeah, she issued to all of us.
I'll give her, and that way you can see what I'm talking about. I, I, I think you could connect to something, but obviously, my technology doesn't work with your technology. Uh, and anything, um, I mean, that's pretty much what I wanted to talk about tonight.
Okay. Once, once you forward the information to Ms. Ed, whip it.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay, finance committee, Mr. Kyle Flynn.
Yes, sir. Uh, we have one item listed here. It's approved monthly invoices, and that is a motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
In a poll, motion carried. Anything else, Mr. Flynn?
Yes, uh, we're having a finance meeting tomorrow at four P M. here at the office.
Any question for the chair? Public working equipment, Mr. Desmond McCray.
I don't have anything, Mr. President.
Building public committee, Mr. Desmond.
Uh, I don't have it. I don't have anything, Mr. President, but I do need to get with the acting parish manager about, you know, scheduling a meeting to discuss some things, not, nothing serious, but we just hadn't had a meeting in a while, so I will be getting with her about that when, you know, just checking her schedule. I don't wanna, you know, overbear her right now, so we are all good.
Okay. Administrative matter.
Um, I don't have anything unless you all have a question.
Any question? We're at the table home security, cause Mr. Bueller's not here. Okay, you're mostly going to the decision for a little longer than fifteen minutes to discuss litigation. Yes.
I would like to recognize Mr. Larry here to be a coal worker, faithful, and if y'all all know, would you have sixty-three or sixty-four? Sixty-four or sixty-four.
Yeah, some have known, honestly.
He's a faithful worker, and I wish all of them would come here and be recognized for their, their work.
That's what I think.
What I wanted to say is we have fourteen hundred ninety voters in our precinct, and sixty-four.
Wow.
They say less than ten percent of the population voted, so less than ten percent.
Some have zero.
Thank you, Ms. Larry. We appreciate your service, okay? Really, we do. Any more, you go to the decision for a little longer than fifteen seconds and discuss the justice lawsuit. That's.
I bring mine in the tank.
There's sharp water in the bag, or something, sharp, I don't know.